Always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora. Let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Thank you, councillor. Public information notices, we have a declaration of key interests and the general nature thereof. I'd ask if there's any member of council who wishes to declare key interests in the general nature thereof pertaining to any items either on today's agenda or from a meeting at which a member was not in attendance. Seeing none, we'll move on to the main crux of the meeting, the 2022 utility budgets review. So Val, defer to staff and where you want to start here.
Yeah, thanks very much, your worship. So we're going to start with the, with a conversation around the bag tag fees and the tipping fees. So you'll recall a couple of months ago, we brought that forward to council, received some feedback from council and some questions from members of the public. So went away just in an effort to try and bring back the best information possible on those issues and wanted to give you, rather than wait for March cow, wanted to give you, you know, an opportunity to get all that information on bag tags as we were discussing revenues and expenditure here for the solid waste budget today. So Kevin will walk you through the report on the, the solid waste fee.
Kevin?
Thank you very much, your worship. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak concerning this. A lot of individuals definitely have had their lens over and, and looked at this report and ensured the accuracy the best that we could. Over the past 20 years, the city of Canora implemented a bag tag program as a mechanism to fairly generate revenue through a user pay system that would be applied to the cost of providing services. Over the past 10 years, inflation has increased in Ontario at a rate of approximately 1.5%. Compounded annually, however, the bag tag rate of $2 has remained the same. The effective impact of this result in reducing purchasing power and therefore strengthens the city's ability to provide services on cost recovery basis. In approximately 2015, the environmental services division aligned its tipping fees to increase funding for its operation. Tipping fees have remained static since 2015. The pressure of recent capital projects as well as future planned projects require the city to adjust its fees, bag tag and tipping fees to ensure adequate funding is available. The proposed funding increases will provide the city with the required funding to adjust quickly to operational changes, explore waste reduction initiatives, as well as provide adequate reserve for future maintenance, growth, replacement of our facilities. I want to, you know, stress that replacement of our facilities. It's, it's one of the key drivers. Administration is including options that include a tiered rate model, which would create a different rate for residential residents of the city of Canora and non-residents. Administration is also presenting a non-tiered rate as an option. Non-residents are individuals who do not own property or live within the city of, the city of Canora corporate boundaries. Administration, administration has reviewed our funding to properly capture the impact on our system from all customers who utilize the service and to ensure there is adequate revenue in place to support long-term sustainability of the utility for the municipality. State-ness, one thing I want to make sure that council understands is there is not sufficient amount of information from statistics as we didn't have a tiered rate prior to this. So there are estimates with, with regards to the impact of the utility as we look at solely as the customer base at this point versus have an actual statistical information of how many non-residents are actually using our facility. It's done on an estimate of understanding the current area, the increase in population, and we used the best guess that we could and stayed quite conservative in our approach to make sure that we weren't overestimating.
So in a nutshell, we might know that, you know, we're tipping dumpsters from Clearwater Bay, but we don't know who's coming across the scale necessarily or what garbage is getting put into the system. So we don't have non-residential stats is really the crux of the issue.
Multiple communities have adopted variations of the non-resident fee model, some of which include the town of Perry Sound, town of Cochrane, township of Ignis, town of Capus, Capuskasing, town of Musney, township of Pickle Lake, town of Hurst, township of Emo, and the city of Tamask, Tamaskamins Shores, I apologize. By way of comparison, the town of Hurst, town of Ignis, and the town of Emo, and the city of Tamaskin Shores have been presented in figure two to represent similar non-residential models. Administration also found instances where some communities have chosen not to accept waste from any other municipal residents. With regards to choosing our, our benchmarking, there are various models of residential and non-residential. Some have chosen certain areas within the tipping fees to put it, some have chosen not to, some have used bag tags, some haven't. So we, we really want to use a comparative of communities that had similarities to what we incorporate and having a understanding of a straight of a line, a straight across the board implementation and calculation of that impact. The city's current landfill was built in 2000 and was designed for a lifespan of 40 years with a designated annual tonnage of 20,265. The cost to construct a new landfill is estimated at 13 to 15 million dollars. An additional three to five million is required for the decommissioning of the old landfill site. As we continue to accept additional waste streams from outside the city boundaries, the useful life of the facility decreases and the cost to operate it increase. In 2021, our landfill accepted almost 34,000 tons of garbage, which is approximately 167% of the design annual tonnage. As a result, in one-year timeframe, the city has reduced its landfill designation, designed life by 1.67 years. This is, this is a significant amount of time and reduction for that landfill in a one-year period.
So Kevin, when right now are we projecting the new landfill to need construction?
We're, we're looking at potentially 15 to 20 years depending on the different variations. We understand COVID has implications in how much has actually come in. We've seen that across the country. However, we're not sure on, depending on different programs the government puts in that renovations and things like that will see increases. But right now, we're look, in my opinion, we're coming about the 15 to 20 year mark.
But if we look at that case of 1.67 years every year, then we're actually looking at seven to 10 years potentially if we kept up that 34,000 tones per year.
Correct. If it stays the 1.67, you're absolutely correct. We're looking at variations and reductions within different programs on COVID prior. So we're, we're trying to keep a average of both to determine our hopeful balance of 15 to 20 with, if we keep the same pace, you're absolutely correct.
For sure. So, you know, always, always hard to predict waste that's going to come in, but you know, again, to reiterate, when the facility was built, we were anticipating about 20,000 tones. We're up at 34,000, so pretty significant increase in waste coming into the facility versus, you know, the size and spec that we built to.
Thank you. Administration's statistics indicated a significant increase in waste generation in the summer months, as indicated in figure one, which we believe to be, is driven by seasonal customers. Canada's 2021 census of Canora unorganized indicates a population of 7,475, which represents an increase of 11.6% over the 2016 census. Population increases with the unorganized Canora region and the corresponding waste being generated will impact the life of the city's landfill, but to what extent is not yet determined and very hard to predict at this point. The proposed tier rate option will allow administration to better evaluate those future impacts appropriately and adjust funding requirements more quickly. As you can see in figure one, that we did indicate the different results within the monthly tonnage for 2021. We, we are seeing, you know, a consistent increase if you look at the average within the area. June and July were definitely, those areas were, where it was quite a bit higher than, than anticipated, but you're also seeing August, September and October and November where there were consistent increases and averaging across there where there, there was still a lot of waste generated in, in those months. Proposed garbage bag take, tag rate increase. As noted, the existing garbage bag tag rate of $2 has not increased over the last 20 years. This rate no longer provides the adequate funding to support the day-to-day operation of the utility. Administration proposes that a tiered rate be implemented for residential and non-residential customers. Further, administration recommends option two in table one. So we, we did listen to council's, you know, opinions and, and suggestions. We want to ensure that we incorporated what, if we kept the rate today, that it would be obviously status quo as far as any revenue generation. But option two shows an increase of residential to $2.50 with non-residentials at three, providing an additional 158,734. And if you look at option three, $3 for the residents and 3.50 for non-resident, an increase of approximately $278,000. And option four, removing a non-residential rate and just increasing user rate of $2.75, providing 194,176. Please understand that, you know, this is also within an estimate boundary of trying to identify the impact of non-residential data and could increase or slightly decrease depending on the impact that we're, we're seeing at our, at our landfill with data.
As a general rule with all the projections that you're going to see in this report, we've tried to be conservative. So we're not, you know, we're not reaching for the moon on any of the projections. So Kevin, I know you've spelled it out here, but I just want to get down to brass tacks, you know, 60 seconds or less. Why would the city want to implement a non-resident rate?
Well, the residents of, of Canora, there are different impacts to size and, and being able to understand the investment that you put for a facility of, of that nature and to constantly ensure that the operation is moving forward. Different programs within the area and the change of infrastructure, we want to capture those increases. For example, if we're seeing an increase within the area that impacts 10 to 15% or, as we saw, 67% potentially increase in that, we need to capture it from the area that's actually creating that increase to ensure that we're, we're reimbursing the, the utility as required, full capture to provide us the, the required funding for the future landfill. If we're decreasing the life due to that additional impact, we need to capture that funding from that area as, as we stipulated earlier. If it said that we're supposed to have 22, 2,200 tones, that's the design capacity and we've increased it due to other customers, there's an additional cost to receive those customers and we need to ensure that those are calculated through those increases in that cost.
So additional costs in staffing, additional costs in equipment?
Equipment.
And more rapid acceleration of?
Life cycling, yes.
Of the lifecycle.
Correct. We did also provide, we wanted to provide council with some benchmarking and I, I want to explain that no one community is the same. We, we can't, we can't clearly indicate through this if these individual landfills are full cost recovery or they're subsidized in any way. All we could go from is their bylaws and understanding where their costs were and we compared their fees with our program to see alignment. So providing that, as you can see, there, there are bag tag rates when you look at Emo where I'm, I'm quite certain Emo, you know, has some subsidization because they don't charge for, for their bag tag rates. However, non-residents pay $20 per bag. So I want to make sure that you understand that that, that's not a typo. That's actual what they feel their recovery model is for their landfill. And if you look at Hurst, there's $2 versus $4. Township of Ignis, $1.50 to $2. Tamaskaming, $4 to $7. But we also wanted to provide other baggage rate from Dryden and Marathon, just to show the comparative of where we currently are with, with other similar municipalities. We also put our current rate, option two and option three. Unfortunately, option four got, got cut off there, so, so please, please understand that.
Just a reminder, that would be 2.75 with no differentiation between resident and?
Correct. Correct. Proposed tipping rate fees, the environmental service division at this time is recommended to propose an increase to its tipping fees as shown in table two. We're recommending option two. If you can see that through the, the different waste streams, we're looking at an increase to the minimum charge in, in both, both options. One, just having a customer rate, so it, it's not separated between a tiered rate of residential and non-residential, but option two, if you can see that there is a, a separate rate between those two tiers, $18 and $20 for minimum charge, difference cost and tonnage for commercial garbage and sewer, sewer sludge and ash have stayed the same. And then construction soil, contaminated soil is also been increased with, with a tiered option and without.
This industry has given, that's only 55.
I'm sorry?
Yes, that's only 55.
55?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a typo in the customer rate of 55, sorry, for industrial ash under the customer rate. The current rates indicated above in table two have not been increased in over seven years and when, within this period, the solid waste reserve has flatlined as indicated in figure three due to the required capital improvements within the landfill. Administration has determined that the current funding structure is insufficient to capture the estimated $500,000 per year that is required to be placed in our solid waste reserve for a future landfill. I would like to, you know, at this time to, you know, reiterate what the C O mentioned is that, that $500,000 is when we're looking at the 20, 20-year mark of replacement, not if there's an increase, the seven to 10-year mark. As we see that model come forward and if we see, you know, where it's still elevating, we will have to adjust that model to ensure that we are properly funding for the future replacement. But the additional statistics will, will provide us with the ability if we do go with a tiered rate on which customer needs to be adjusted for their impact.
And so just looking back to the table there, table two on the tipping rate increases, option one, again, no differentiation between residents and non-residents. Option two, split. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Yep. We've also provided a benchmark opportunity within figure four. And if you can see the different tipping fees per tonnage as indicated.
Any questions on those tables, figures?
Do we want to go through the presentation because I think if we, if we open to questions, we're going to be all?
So we're going to move on to the implementation, implementation plan. Administration is recommending that proposed increases take effect of July 4th, 2022. This will allow sufficient time to communicate the changes to our users. Administration also requires time to change our internal processes in order, in, in order to, processes and order bag tags for both the resident and non-residential customers. The department feels confident in its ability, ability to operationalize two separate colored bag tags that can quickly identify as residents and non-residential customers. This process would include periodic spot checks within the transfer site in order to ensure compliance with the rates. As part of administration of the new system, patrons who purchase bag tags at the transfer station or dispose of items through our scales, customers will be required to provide identification to clearly identify their residential status. Properly identifying residential status includes providing your driver's license, utility bill, or, or their individual city of Canora tax bill. If a customer uses any other means than their driver's license, they must provide government issued picture identification with their paper documentation. Administration will monitor this process system and if necessary, implement future changes as required to improve customer flow and adoption of the tiered rate model. If council deems appropriate to not implement a tiered rate in the bag tag rates, option four, table one, or tipping key, option one, table two, no additional spot checks or procedural changes will be required to implement. We also add a summary to summarize the options and further that administration is recommended increasing to both the bag tag and the tipping fees with the start date of the 4th of July.
All right. So do we want to discuss just the bag tag? Do we want to split the two? I think it'll give us a better discussion in terms of bag tags, one part of discussion, tipping fees, the second part here, or do we just want to free for all?
Well, my question kind of aligned with both of them together, but I mean, that's, that's fine. I mean, I can ask a supplementary question after.
I'm good either way, so.
Really quick, Charlotte, if I understand correctly, the budget that's before council, that is with the recommended options that administration has provided.
That is correct.
So I just, I just want to be clear and we don't need to get into that yet, but I just wanted you to understand those are the figures that we've built into the budget.
All right. So we're going to go with councillor Porey first, please.
So on the implementation side of it, I'm still trying to figure out how, how that would work and I think you laid out some more information to help guide me that way. But just as an example, not for myself, I just won't buy bag tags like at a store, like Ravel Lake Store or wherever. I put it on the bag, I drive up to the transfer station, I don't go over the scales, so I don't really interact with any staff and I place it in the bin. So what's to say that someone who lives in the unorganized territory, it could be anywhere in the unorganized territory, could just go somewhere and buy the same bag tag as myself, drive up to the transfer station, which most people do, and then just put it in the bin like you're, like you're not really capturing a resident versus a non-resident in that situation. And I think it probably happens a lot because I always meet people there that live in, on the unorganized territories that are dropping their bags off, like similar to what I do. So is there a, a major loss doing it that way? Because someone's going to figure out to do that. And I, like, I just, I don't know how that's going to work, you know, versus going over the scales and asking for ID and that. I just, I'm not saying it won't, but I, I just, I wonder how much of a lead there would be by people doing that instead of following the other, your other method to be identified.
Through the chair. We, we understand there's, there's risk of a lost revenue for those that are going to be dishonest with the system and it's, it's being able to align our bylaw after we move forward to ensure that the, the fines for any individual that are not complying with the bylaw are significant enough as a deterrent. Doing spot checks, ensuring that, you know, we have staff that are face, face forward in, in order to, to represent that we are there looking, we, we are there to, to provide good customer service at the same time, protect the interest of all customers and the, the city at the same time. Do we believe there will be some abuse? Absolutely, in any program there is. Our job is, is to ensure that we're evaluating what we see and adapt to potential increase inspections or put more formalized applications within the transfer station where we, we will be checking or there'll be changes within the process. So as, as explained within the report, it, it's going to be an evaluation and, and redetermining if there's additional steps that are going to be required in order to control that population. But at the same time, if there's increased resources in order to, to implement on the non-residential because of non-compliance, those charges and additional costs will be to the non-residents formula.
We also, we also have discussed going to visit some of these other municipalities or having conversations with some of the other municipalities about their steps that they take to enforce non-residential rates. So best practices that we could find from our neighbors are also going to be examined.
You're welcome.
Councillor McMillan? I acknowledge your hand.
Well, I'm sorry, I must put it up, my mistake. I'm not ready for a question yet. Thank you.
Okay.
My question has been, has been pretty much answered. I was, where are the bag tags being sold? So I'm concerned about that. Obviously, we wouldn't be selling residential bag tags in Reddington. Pardon me, I'll move a little closer to the microphone.
Through the chair, we're still planning on using the same format of, of selling. We're not going to be asking the sellers to verify identification. We, we don't want to create any additional problems with being able to process it that way. We're looking at enforcement onsite.
We would instruct the stores that sell the bag tags to ask and to have both available for purchase.
Correct.
Again, we've had a lot of conversations about this at senior leadership. It's always difficult to try and make policy for people that are going to circumvent.
I get that, but why would you sell residential bag tags at Clearwater Bay?
That is not a conversation that we've had and to be honest, I don't have.
Obviously, we're working on best practice. That was my question.
An exhaustive list of all the stores, but I'm sure we would be able to get that very quickly and we could make those determinations and ensure that only non-residential tags would be at those locations.
Absolutely. I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
So Kevin, a couple of things for clarification. Based on this proposal, are there any, because of the, the proposed two-tiered bag tags, are there any additional staffing requirements built into this budget model?
Through, through the chair, your worship, no, there haven't at this point. We're looking at, the, the next half year of an implementation will determine if any additional costs will be required depending on the impact or additional enforcement that may be required. We believe with the model right now is if we see additional resources required or a blip and understand that that's where it's coming from, we will adjust our, our requirements at that time. But the statistics, we're really looking at getting the statistics to understand that impact before doing the funding model and we believe the contingency of staff have the ability to monitor. They're just going to have to ask more questions. There may be a little bit slower application going through the scales for the additional questions, but we believe we can move the model forward.
Okay.
Just, just to add on to that, looking at the summary table, you'll notice that administration, of all the options, administration isn't recommending the options that will drive the most revenue to the city. As Kevin said, you know, change is hard, so we're recommending going to a resident and non-residential rate based on the, based on the reasons that Kevin has laid out. We are really taking the next six, 12, 18 months seriously to try and monitor, get better statistics and data to really understand what material effect that has in the landfill. And that's why we're not trying to just, you know, we're, we're trying to take a cautious approach and, and, you know, step into this, you know, incrementally rather than just looking for that big revenue jump. We're, we're not looking just to collect a bunch of money. We're trying to do it in a prudent manner while readjusting the current system to provide better protection for the individuals in the city of Canora, you know, who are seeing their? for the individuals in the city of Canora, uh, you know, who are seeing their landfill's useful life declined year over year.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Normally, we build something and we determine what the annual operating costs are. In this case here, we've already got our operations in place, but we need to project how much and when a new landfill is going to cost. So I would use the example you provided to council the other day with the total snow accumulation over the last number of years. So, is it, is that same type of information available? You're saying we put in 34,000 tons this year, do we have that same information going back so we can see annually how much we've used? Because the reality is, no matter what we raise the fees, or if we raise the fees today, it's not going to stop the flow of, uh, of waste coming into our landfill. So I think it's really important that we look long-term planning of what the projected date is, so, you know, was 34,000 a blip, was 2020, you know, 28,000, 32. If, if we could get that data, if it's available, it, it just, I think of the snow load you gave us the other day and how it really put things into perspective when that was available.
Thank you, your worship, uh, we, we do have some, uh, some data here, um, our actuals, um, I, I can circulate this to council afterwards, we didn't incorporate it in, into it, but we, we can provide it later.
Why don't I go copy it and you just carry on a little bit?
All right, at this time, uh, I'll ask Counselor McMillan. Rory, you're still unmuted, Counselor. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Rory, I just want to ask you across this question, at our January meeting, um, that was originally discussed, we referred it until March, are we looking at, um, approving a rate increase today, or are we going to bring it to committee, the whole, and I want to ask this question for the purpose, um, what we stated back in January, just to see any clarification.
Thank you, Counselor, um, the clerk will address that question.
Uh, thanks, Counselor McMillan. So as part of the budget process, in order for finance to include it as part of the budget process, it needs to be discussed today, so they know what to include to bring the budget forward. It would be very challenging for them to have a budget to present to council in March for recommendation to approve without knowing the direction that council, um, has on this matter. It's a significant difference in the budget, and therefore that's why it's part of today's discussion. And just as a reminder on budget process, today is the day to go through, identify changes to the budget, um, make those recommendations, and then finance comes back with a final budget for approval in March. This is a discussion day, so this is not an approval day, that will come forward in March.
Thank you, I'm, I'm understanding, thank you.
So everyone should now have a copy of the year-over-year tonnage, you'll see the 2021 actual is not in there, but Kevin did provide that to you in your report.
I have, I have not included 2021, but, you know, like, those are, are not, right?
Could you just speak up a little bit, Mekhetha?
Then you have to be on that, or you can't hear.
So, you know, like, so I have not provided 2021 data, but it goes a little bit off, right? So those are the data from the transfer stations, right? And the, the blue is the constant, that is 20,265 tons, that is the designed tons, right? And, you know, like, and the rate is what we got, actually, right? So.
So looking at these numbers.
There's been some significant increases.
We've had some significant impacts over the years, um, so COVID is not the underlying driving, it could contribute significantly to what's happened in those two years, but obviously it, it has occurred in prior years, so. The reality is, is, is we're almost every year exceeding what was the average capacity on the site in this first plan.
Counselor Porey, please.
Yeah, so just, uh, just to follow up on, uh, Mayor Raynard's comment, uh, the way I understood his question in that was, um, like taking this chart, which is great information, but like pushing it out into whatever date that might be, that would create a capacity issue at the current landfill site. Like this is great information, but this doesn't tell me beyond, you know, 2026, assuming that, you know, whatever, there's an average. Um, I don't know what capacity is left at, in 2026 in the current landfill site, um, which I think is the perfect information in order to say, okay, by doing these increases, uh, having to reserve X number of dollars to do this again and create a new landfill site, kind of missing a couple pieces here.
Yes, sir, like, just two years ago, like, our engineering department, they did, like, a bomb survey at the landfill, right? And they found like, uh, 25 years of remaining landfill, like two years ago, right? So, you know, like, so we have another like 22, 23 years life left at the landfill.
So.
Kevin, do you understand?
Is, I, I do, thank you, through the chair.
What we're asking is that you extrapolated out.
Correct.
Based on the average usages.
Correct, yes, your worship.
And, so if you, that, we don't need that today, but if that's something that Mekhesh and, and your department can pull together for us, it'll give us a, you know, it's not going to be accurate, because we never know, but it'll give us a, a fairly good indicator, uh, based on the original design, how much time we have left here.
Through the chair, um, yes, the, the one thing I want to point out is that between, um, 2015 and 2017, we're looking at anomaly year, which we can't explain, right? If you look at the other one, there, there is an increase in a, in a couple of jump that could be due to increase in development or, uh, population on the one side, um, but we're seeing it consistent, if you look from 2007 to, uh, to close to 15, to me, those are more in your average years with, with high points. So, when we calculated the 15 to 20 years, we tried to calculate it, uh, somewhat on the average, but I, I definitely hear what council is saying, and we can bring that forward, uh, to give you a clear picture of if we, if we continue down this path of the average of what the impact is to the actual life of that landfill.
Uh, Counselor Smith, or Counselor Van Wellingham, please. No.
I have to unmute. Still muted. Just hold the space bar down, Counselor Ben Wellingham.
All right. Okay now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, okay, that is, uh, that's really good information in your report there, and it answers all the questions we had, that I had in the meeting in January, so those are good answers. The whole deal is going to be with the landfill site and the cost of it, so I do believe every other non-resident should pay. There's a, a number of services in the city where the non-resident pays a little more now, whether it's a library, museum, or rec center, so I think this will just work all good. I had two questions that have been answered here pretty good, the one, this will be looked at again in the near future, we'll keep, uh, running data on it, okay? But the second concern I had was a lineup at the, the transfer station, when we go there, there's lineups, now when people get quite aggravated, if you're going to stand in line and show your ID and your address and argue with the person in there, I really have some concerns that there's going to be a much longer lineup. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you very much, um, we do anticipate, we, we've looked this year on different models within the, um, transfer station of having customers being able to come in, dispose of their, uh, recycling garbage in an efficient manner, and then leave the site. Some of the, some of the, the restraints within the site is where the frustration, and we try to, uh, make it where individuals stop at a certain point, rather than free-for-all type of system, which kind of was in place, where individuals were self-policing how they park or where they went. Now, it's a, it's a little bit more strategic in, in fashion of being able to move forward and back. We do anticipate that there will be frustrations through this, uh, we, we are going to be working on communication plan, um, with the customers and also finding ways to support our, our staff to implement corrections. Um, we're, we're going to have to adjust through this, this, this is a new program that the community, uh, if we go to a tiered rate, is going to, you know, experience some pinch points, but we'll try to adjust to them as quickly as we can, and if staffing resources are required, um, we'll find how, how we can make those adaptations and come to council with that. Um, but at this point, we're estimating that a lot of the transfer or, or the purchase of the bag tags are going to be done, uh, outside of the transfer station, and it's just going to be the policing and the reviewing onsite, um, individuals going through the scales, um, they'll be asked more questions, and when they come in for payment, they're just going to be, uh, asked for, uh, documentation to prove their residential, uh, status. So, individuals that come to the transfer station and walk across the scale and, or the area to try to get their bag tags does slow down the process, um, but it's another stream that we use. We potentially can tell customers that, you know, um, we align that a little bit differently, uh, and look at that model of where you can't purchase bag tags there, that you need to purchase them at different places to speed up the operation there and, and allow it to move, but it is difficult, once you provide a service, to remove that service from a customer base.
Anytime you make a change like this, there's, there's going to be some effects you expect, and there's going to be some that you don't, so, again, we're really relying on that, you know, the observations that we're going to make over the next year, year and a half, to see where those pinch points are.
Sure.
We do have a number of charge clients as well, and those can be set up with the appropriate rate in our receivable system, and we do send out monthly billing, so the people who charge, we will have the correct rates.
Any other comments? Counselor Chase, please.
Thank you, your worship, um, so just for clarification, there was no outreach or communication in terms of market research with the retail, the private sector retailers, and what their take is on implementing this type of a program? Like, I, I'm thinking, what is, what is the volume of transactions, that, like, do we have any data on, you know, how many customer interactions are there on a daily, monthly, or weekly basis where, you know, we could be creating a significant burden for some of these business owners to have to ID every client that comes in to buy a bag tag? Um, so I'm concerned about that. Another concern that I have, and I'm just going to say it as a concern, not necessarily a question, but I, I, again, it's an implementation problem where I think of a seasonal resident who, who pays municipal tax levy, has a seasonal residence on Coney Island, you're telling me if they're bringing their bag tag, their garbage to the landfill or buying bag tags that, you know, they're going to have an out of province or out of?
They're, they're a resident.
They have a driver's license, and now they have to bring their tax bill to go, to go and get a bag tag? Like, I just, I, I don't like the idea of labeling people and having to enforce that. It's, it's, like, at a time where we're trying to encourage people to come here and spend money, it's, it's, it divides people, and it's the wrong message, and I, I understand the math, I understand the need to raise capital and that, you know, we can't get the capital, we need to replace the landfill because of this burden from the non-resident, but to me, it's, it's, we're shooting ourselves in the foot at a time where a lot of these people don't feel very welcome here, and it's, it's an opportunity for the municipality to label people as different, and I'm fully against it, like, I just, I can't, I, there's, there's too many holes in the implementation, too, I, I just don't, I don't like this. I, I'm all for a fee increase, um, you know, but it's, I, I don't, I, I don't see it, I can't, I can't support it.
Just to speak to the implementation at the retail level, you know, sometimes you just need to keep things simple. A letter's going to go to the retailers, it's going to say, please train your staff to ask if they're a resident or a non-resident, do not push back, take their answer, and provide them with the bag tag that they request. We're not looking to, um, download any additional responsibilities onto the retailers. Like I said, there is a certain amount of honor system that's going to have to be, uh, done here, and, and it's just, it's a reality of a fundamental change like this.
It's, it's not that simple, honestly, like, I, I, I understand it's easy to say that, when you're dealing with an angry customer, and it's a one after the end, it's one customer in front of one, go, hey, why does he get that sticker, but I get this sticker? They're not going to be able to explain in an elevator pitch why we need to raise this capital, why we have a tax burden, like, there's, there's, they're not going to, like, the 15-year-old retail worker working the till is not going to be able to explain that to an irate customer.
I just want to restate.
So.
The retailer asks, resident or non-resident? The person says, resident, they get a resident bag tag. There's no debate, there's no explanation, there's no rationale.
Then non-residents are just going to say they're residents, and then we're not going to collect the revenue, so.
The challenge, but the challenge is right now is we're not collecting that revenue anyways.
But we can't, well, not if we just increase the fees across the board, I mean, I, I think everybody pays the same price.
I'm, I'm only speaking to the questions, I'm not speaking to the politics of the situation, I'm only speaking to how we would implement that, and I just want to be clear that we are not looking for retailers to ask a six-point, uh, you know, exam every time somebody goes to landfill.
Yeah, but I'm saying there's a risk, that's going to be, that problem's going to be, we're creating a problem that we can avoid, like, that's, that's what I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Counselor Smith, please.
Thank you, Eric, and, um, to Kevin and staff, I think that, um, well researched this, um, subject. I agree with your report, um, the risk to our community is a financial risk, and it's huge going forward, um, when it comes to replacement of that landfill. Um, we could be looking at, um, restricting it to non-residents, we don't want to be doing that, because we are appreciative of the non-residents that are contributing to this community, and, um, I don't need any more information, I'm prepared, I'm prepared to support this going forward so that staff can get our budget presentation. So, thanks, James, I think it's a great report.
Counselor McMillan, do you have your hand up again, or?
Uh, yes, I do, your worship, and.
Please go ahead.
Very, very brief. Um, through you and Kevin, um, in respect to Counselor Ben Wellingham's question, if I read correctly, what you, you have called a waste budget, um, you're talking about development of another station to address at the transfer station, am I correct? Where one staff could be with, with, um, electricity, a cash register, and all that, I can't remember the exact wording in, uh, budget sheet, but that may also be relieving some of the pressure on, on the scales, I, I may be wrong, but it is some of the, as well.
Uh, through the chair, um, the project that you're, um, I believe you're, uh, referring to has to do with the improvements within the replacement of the scale equipment. There's only two places, uh, with, within our organization that you can bring wastes to our transfer station site or directly to the landfill. So, um, I, if we incorporate any other, uh, type of area for disposal, that would have to go through an approval process, uh, so, uh, that's, those are the two areas where we receive solid waste.
Is there any other comments regarding the tipping fees?
Thank you, your worship, I just want to make sure that we understand is that, um, we're, we're not trying to cause a burden, um, to both the residential and non-residential customers, they are customers, they are stakeholders, um, and that for the implementation, uh, if we find a lot of resistance or a lot of concerns within, within that program, there's abilities of having a registered card or something of that effect where individuals can, can move forward, there are different plans and different options depending on what comes forward. Other, through our research in other communities, they solely use the driver's license. Uh, we know that's, uh, that, that could be a concern in our, in our environment that we have, uh, due to the seasonal customers, as well as the uniqueness of addressing things on our driver's license, uh, within, uh, the, the region. So we, we have to adapt to the plan as we see these pinch points, uh, if it goes forward, uh, and we're willing to listen to the customers as those pinch points come forward to see on how we can address, shift the application, and ensure that it, it moves forward as smoothly as it can, uh, with as little, uh, uh, problems to our customers. That, that's the reason why we asked for, you know, understanding that we're going to be grabbing stats, we're going to be moving forward, trying to find more information within a year, year and a half, trying to implement, and we're going to ask people for, for their patience while we work through a new, uh, a new program.
Counselor Chase?
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Your Worship. When the landfill was built in 2000, is there any data in terms of how it was financed in terms of, like, the distribution between the municipal component versus provincial or federal dollars? And again, I'll be straight up with where I'm going with this angle. It's to claim that the non-residents aren't paying their share, they pay property taxes too, and through those taxes, the province will contribute to the capital replacement of the landfill. So I mean, they don't directly fund it through municipal tax levy, but their tax dollars still go to a landfill here. So I can't project or assume what the province will contribute to our landfill in 20 years or 40 years, but I'm curious what maybe the split was in 2000.
I can go back and find that out, that's not a problem, although I can say that we don't often receive funding for solid waste or sewer and water, or, I shouldn't say sewer and water, we don't often receive funding for solid waste projects. So more than likely came out of reserve, but I will confirm that.
Yeah, and for sewer and water, we typically have to be part of a larger project.
Exactly, yes. Thank you.
But I mean, in terms of replacing the actual landfill, like, you're saying we won't likely qualify for some type of financial assistance or support from the provincial government?
We don't often see that kind of funding. I'm not saying we won't.
Okay.
If, when the time comes, but you don't often see that kind of funding.
All right, any others? Comments? I think, just to be clear, we're, the recommendation we're coming forward to counsel will be option two in both scenarios, correct?
Correct, Your Worship.
All right, thank you. So now allow staff to move on to the budget presentation, please.
All right, I'll start out and go through the summary with you, and that's the plan. And then we'll have Kevin and Mookesh present the detailed departments. At this point, I just want to plug my, the asset retirement obligation that you will be seeing in the 2023 financial statements. And when Kevin talked about decommissioning the old landfill, we have to record that liability starting in 2023. So when we're looking at that three to five million, that's a PISA requirement to come. So just a heads up there. Okay, if everyone is in their solid waste tab and we're looking at the first sheet, and it's the analysis of system funding available, actual and projected.
Are these the final numbers, or there still may be some slight deviations?
These should be the final numbers pending any changes that come up today. Because these reflect option two.
All right, thank you.
So just to clarify, though, if, if council wants to sit and think on the bag tags, we wouldn't be in a position to have a budget unless, we may need to have a special meeting on the budget. If, if council's going to wait till Cal and council to make a determination on bag tags, I don't see how we would be able to do them in the same meeting.
But how do we make, we can't make a decision today. That has to go with...
No, so it's the, would be the normal processes of other budget discussions where you direct administration to take away council's recommendations for changes, and they would go back, make those changes, and that would be the budget they would present to you in March.
All right, thank you.
So option two would be reflected in that budget, you pass the budget in March, and it would be passed.
So it would be prudent for council to provide direction on the solid waste fee increases today so that we could make the appropriate changes to the budget document.
Yep, so you would make that recommendation.
We'll go through the budget, please.
Okay, so at the top part of the page, you have actual numbers, and for 2021, because we are after year-end, these are going to be fairly accurate for 2021, pending some small year-end adjustment changes. But we do end up with the reserve balance of $3,284,930. As I said, there may be some additional year-end adjustments as we get through year-end, but that's what we're starting with to look at our 2022 budget. At the bottom, you will see a five-year projection, and so we do have a five-year capital plan in this budget. We also have the three-year operating budget as in previous years. And you can see the budget projection, or the revenue, sorry, the reserve projection at the end of each of the next five years. And we go from, you know, $3 million to $4.1 million, depending on, you know, future budgets, capital additions or deletions will certainly change those balances, but that's based on the five-year capital plan at this point. So that is the summary, and I will now pass it over to Kevin and Mookesh to present the department budgets and the capital five-year plan.
Thank you, Your Worship and council. Sorry, I'm just reallocating some documents here. Going through the budget, there hasn't been a lot of significant changes within the different codes within the area. We have some modest, moderate increases in 448 on 448-7750, where we're looking at additional repairs and maintenance requirements to the transfer facility. But besides that, there's been really no real huge adjustments to the budget. We stayed pretty consistent with what the facility runs, and our manager runs a pretty tight ship out there to make sure that everything is taken care of. Within, within the areas, is there any questions within the budgetary areas? Because myself, it's been pretty well cost of increase versus any large increases within the area besides the capital portion.
All right, so there's not a lot here. Can we just go into each one, and if council has questions, we'll, we'll address them as opposed to, you don't need to go line by line.
Correct.
So we'll start with 441 garbage collection. So just so all councils aware, if you have questions, please put up your hand using the, and then if I don't see any hands, then we'll just move to the next department, or the next...
Councilor.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Yeah.
So just so I understand, like, on the very first page, the funding analysis, so the revenue, and then the reserves, so can we ask a question about that later, or should we ask that now, or...
We can ask now, Andrew.
Okay.
Our council report.
So the only question I have is, when, so when we got this report, and then I looked back at the binder, when I picked up on roughly an additional half a million dollars is required to go into reserves to offset or help fund the new landfill site. So when I looked at this first page, and I won't include 2022 because it'll be, it'll be a co-rated year of the increases and such. But when I look from 2023 to 2026, if we're really trying to increase our revenue to have an additional $500,000 set aside in reserves, we're already off by a million dollars. Because, or a little less than that, I guess, because in 2023, at the end, we have 2.9 million, and then at the end of 2026, conceivably, we have 4.1, so it's really just over a million dollars. Shouldn't we have, based on your report, shouldn't we have $2 million, or an additional $2 million? So shouldn't it be, you know, shouldn't it be 2 point, or 4.9 million at the end of 2026, not 4.1? Like, we're already, like, I just, I see the trajectory here, and we're not going in the way that we want to go, and a million dollars is a lot of money to make up because you've already taken out four or five years out of that 20-year projection, so.
One important note with the July 4th implementation is we're basically losing half of 2022, so that's...
Well, no, but I'm even, I discounted 2022, and I think I mentioned that. So I'm looking at 2023, and I'm looking to 2026, and I'm looking at the balanced system funding because that's the reserve you carry. So it's, and I can understand capital requirements and so on and so forth, but how are we going to make that million dollars up over the span of the additional, say, 16 years?
Through the chair, thank you very much for the question. We understand, there's some capital projects within here that have, you know, lowered the amount of funding that, that is available. We're seeing some of the replacements in cost right now that are kind of getting to a point where it's going to be maintained for, where there's not going to be a lot more larger projects that are, that are expected for the area. Understanding that large shifts in funding cause a lot more stress to the community, we're looking at incrementally, seeing every year on how much we can actually increase it with the pinch points and try to get there. Because the community and, and we've listened to the community and I've tried my best to understand the environment and through my municipal career, we like putting gradual increases and reevaluating every year and putting those increases and trying to capture that and mount it, catch up a little bit every year. Saying that, we want to make sure there's not one big catch-up at the end, and in order to capture it and monitor our, our project, the information we find, if council chooses to go with a tiered and non-tiered rate, will have the calculations of where those adjustments need to be made depending on the impact and the usage. Now, being able to move up, you'll know which, which model you're, you're going to be charging the additional cost depending on what variation is, but you don't want to overcharge one area and then there's a huge reduction. You want to make sure that you're consistently going up on a positive trending and not huge scale jumps. Those seem to be more impactful, and we prefer to use the model of adjusting yearly through that scale.
So I think I understand finance, but it takes a lot of work to try and figure out, like the question Counselor Forre just asked. When I looked at the numbers, I go, this doesn't make sense. So it took me half an hour just to go back and forth trying to figure things out. I'd really like to see us change the format so that if we look at our analysis of system funding, it shows the revenues from these different departments, so you can compare revenue to revenue. What we see is, these are the net.
Yes.
So, you know, I look at one, and it's, you know, we make 141, 190, 167, it drops down to 18. So there's something major in 2020 that occurred at the transfer site that we, you can't tell from these reports. It needs to be, the whole thing needs to be much clearer. And that's not at year-end, that's the finance. And I've never liked our finance system in terms of it's really difficult to pull good information. And you're working with what you have, but it's incumbent upon a counselor to go back and forth and try and figure things out.
I would like nothing better, and we've got new people working on it, and this just wasn't the year to do it. But certainly, I agree.
Thank you.
Broadly, just, not to speak about what's represented in front of you from a budgetary perspective, but just to give you a little bit more insight, we are working, and we can't speak much to this, but we have a number of irons in the fire from a potential revenue generation standpoint. There's some external customers, Kevin, that we're engaged in conversations with. I don't know if we need to go in any deeper than that, but we are looking at other mechanisms to bring in waste to try and drive revenue. But, you know, it's always a double-edged sword because at the same time, that's going to speed up the useful life of the landfill. So it's, you know, that's the situation we find ourselves in.
Counselor McMillan, please.
Hi, Your Worship, I don't have any questions.
Okay, could you, if you go into your, and take down your hat then, please? Thank you.
I think that's just a light...
That's what I have.
I don't think it's... The hand's yellow.
That's just a light bulb.
Sorry, Counselor McMillan, that's a light bulb above your, over by, it's overhanging over your desk. It looks like a certificate or something. You're fucking him.
You're doing my best to stay right, Your Worship.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm causing more issues for you. All right. So are there any, I'm sorry. Shelly or Kevin?
No problem, Your Worship. I just want to point out, you know, I've, I've taken very strongly your thought process on the scale and looking at the averaging within that area. This scale could, could be better utilized with the funding model to understand the average and not increase on the peaks, and understand that, you know, if we see consistency within a couple of years, that changes the average and changes the financial requirement, and then start increasing at that point. But we're looking at increases in that area because there are years where we're going to have large increases of solid waste and other years that are lower. You don't want to charge for the higher, but you want to make sure you're recovering sufficiently enough where you're grabbing the revenue that's required for long-term.
Chuck, did you want to make a comment?
With a large project like a landfill construction, I mean, it would be really nice to have the 100% amount coming out of reserves and being prepared for that, but, you know, a portion may have to be debt-financed at that time as well, just to alleviate some of the pressure on the reserves, so that's an option as well.
To Kevin's point, you know, just on the incremental versus these exponential step jumps, 20 years is a long time. So, you know, that's, that's why our reserves are in the state that they are, because we've spent 20 years just riding the $2 fee. So we're trying to move away from that and move towards those inflationary increases. But, you know, it is, that's part of what's driving the situation, and why we might have to debt-finance a facility like that, because we've, we've taken this approach to try and keep bag tags controlled over the last 20 years.
All right, so 441, are there any questions from council? Seeing that 445 hazardous waste. Could, Mookesh, could you explain, there's one-year revenue miscellaneous $37,000 last Like, there's no budget, there's no budget going forward. Yeah, we're just curious why we receive $38,000. And while the finance team is looking through that, we'll come back and see the response. Charlie, he'll let me know when Michelle ready. Thank you. All right. Why would the revenues not increase if, if we're increasing, or we're all, like, what revenues are recognized at Jones Road and what revenues are recognized when we go construction across the scale? And if not, why is, because it just shows 887 right across the board here as we move What feature are you on, Mayor? 450, Department 450.
So last year, yes, the last year in 2021, the budget was 800,000.
Right.
Right? But, you know, like, but the revenue that was generated is 98, right? The revenue?
Yeah. No, what I'm asking is if you look at the budget moving forward...
The proposed changes, understand, Your Worship.
Yeah, so are we missed revenues, or are they all in one area?
So we have included those proposals, and we made, like, you know, the budget 887.
If I can just take a second, Your Worship. If I can just take a second, your worship, thank you. Thank you, your worship. So those increases are actually captured in there. If you look under the Table 2, within the rate increases that were proposed, the Jones Road specifically shows the increases within there of 65,550 within those areas. So within the option that was provided, Option 1 was 85,500, and the other one is 65,500. So that has been included in those tabulation of increase, plus the cost of increases through the utility.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? All right. 451, Tri Municipal landfill, and that's just ongoing, make, or monitoring from the first rule, so.
So that $37,000 is, and I'm not sure it's in the right department, but it's the recycling, the food, call food, food cyclers, the food cyclers, so.
All right, thank you.
Oh, maybe that is a good place.
It is.
Two minutes, Mokazov, yes.
It is.
All right, 453, solid waste vehicles and equipment. And I'm sorry to keep lamenting about our antiquated financial system, but here's a three-page report on a small department, and when we get into the operations department, it just seems, I'm not sure why we have a line item for every vehicle, and we charge the vehicle out to the department and show a recovery here. It just seems like that's got to take a lot of administrative work, all the way through, from finance right through, you know, from the average person that's out in that truck that day and has to record, you know, I did this, I did this. It's just a comment, and again, we're not going to address it this year, but I really think that this is an area in terms of efficiency, that we really should be looking at how we change. And it impacts every department throughout the system that has any piece of equipment or vehicle. And its owners on staff.
I agree, it is owners. But up until, well, probably this year, and just so you know, we are discussing this whole allocation of wages to multi-departments, the vehicles, the equipment time, absolutely. Up until this year, finance was the only place where we could track this type of detailed information, the GL. Now we have another system that will track this kind of information for us without the GL having to be the one and only source of information on specific, well, for example, vehicles. So we'd be happy to reduce our workload and have the information somewhere else, but if it wasn't kept track of here, we would not have it.
Well, Mr. Chair, while I agree with the tenor of your comments, is there anything, because this is a standalone utility, Charlotte, is that part of what's driving this level of detail?
Correct.
But it's not just this.
We could simplify.
When you go in, like, the operations, it'll be a 10-page report.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. 458, solid waste supervisor. Any questions, counsel? All right, so, I'm sorry.
Okay, so if I may, and the mayor was looking for a better tie-in of the gross revenue and the gross expenses to that summary sheet. Finance does have a working paper that I, we can provide to council by email.
Thank you.
When the meeting is done, this will tie in a lot better. This is kind of background information that we do input into the system.
All right, thanks, Charlotte. So Kevin, if you want to walk us through the capital budget, please?
Most certainly.
And I would ask counsel if you have questions, I'm asking as we do each budget. If I don't see any hands, I'm just moving forward.
Sorry, your worship, if you can just give me a moment, we're just trying to correct one thing to make sure that counsel has the information. Thank you, your worship and counsel. The, through the capital, I am going to go to 22448, the replacement of the weight scale. The transfer station weight scale has been used for more than 25 years and is in need of replacement, so that's the major reason for the replacement. The scale is a legislative requirement for, to weigh waste coming into the facility. So the cost on that is estimated for funding is $200,000 to be funded through the solid Moving on to 2244802, new booth near the recycling gate. This is to add a customer service booth near the gate of the recycling depot. This will include one full-time staff to provide customer service to the public. The new booth will be purchased and operated through the year. So this will alleviate some of the concerns that we have with, that we had this year with the customer service, and that's why we put the single lane in place with a stop sign. We found that individuals were not listening to any of the signage. We have, unfortunately, some issues with, it seems to be over signage in some areas, and individuals were just doing what they needed to. So some customer forward-focused was required for the area in order to help support customers to drop off their waste.
So this says, this will include one full-time staff. Is that a new position? Because if we have a.
We are going to use a part-time contingency in order to staff. It's not a full-time position. We're going to be using part-time and seasonal in order to take care of that at this point, your worship, and evaluate it. I believe that's the program referring to the HR director, but I can verify that in further detail.
Because the justification indicates a full-time position for two students.
I agree, your worship. We'll get clarification on that for you. The U244801, the garbage building floor repair. The garbage building is heavily used throughout the year. Different types of vehicles have entered the garbage building to drop off garbage. The building has a concrete floor. The floor, the existing floor is 20 years old, and the floor was also inspected by a group of engineers to conclude that it does need some repairs to it. So we'll just, is there any questions on that one at all?
Just on the justification, talks about the three doors, yet there's, so what is the project? Is it the floor, or is it replacing the doors?
The replacement, from my understanding, I'll refer to customer manager here, but my understanding is it was for the floor, your worship.
It has both. It has both, like, the garbage building has three, like, doors, like, there is, that is really, really old, so it is beyond the repair, so we have to replace that door very soon, so it has both, right?
Okay, so can we change this sheet so it's reflective of what we're actually doing?
Absolutely, your worship. Landfill development peripheral road. Canora area landfill is designed to manage municipal solid waste according to the master plan. Landfill was designed along with peripheral road around the footprint. Currently, the landfill does not have the road and the ditch. The funding for this is coming out of the solid waste reserve, and. This is a carry-forward project, your worship. It's currently, it's not completed, but it is going through its construction portion.
That's why the amount is so low.
Purchasing of a grizzly screener, Jones Road landfill. The grizzly screener is required to screen out gravel and large boulders from the daily covered material, dirt. The landfill uses the covered material to cover the garbage on a daily basis. Currently available dirt is being dug from around the landfill and plans to dig covering material from the pit. This is a requirement in order to properly manage and maintain the facility appropriately, and is within the tiers of soil and different recovery of that fill material, and make sure that we're filling it with the appropriate aspect versus going out and purchasing material. We can use our current with the screener to provide the material that's required. The cost is estimated at $170,000, and. I'm sorry, $17,000, I do apologize. It is a typo. It's $17,970. Thank you, Mekesh. And it's coming out of the solid waste reserve, so.
So that was, let me drop.
So the summaries will change by the difference when you see them.
Transfer station loader, to replace the transfer station loader, the 2014 Camatu. So the transfer station loader hours are pretty high, and they are, it's in operation seven days a week. The old unit has 11,750 hours as of July 21st, sorry, July 2021, and is getting at the point where it's actually exceeding its life cycle and its reliability. So in order to prevent any additional failures in that area for that required equipment, we're looking for the replacement, which will come out of the solid waste reserve at $275,000 estimate. The walking floor trailer carry forward, the 53-foot steel open walk-in floor garbage trailer was ordered in 2021 but will not be received until 2022. This is a carry-forward project. Half-ton 4x4, four-door pickup, carry forward as well. It's the same concern that we've had with all of our vehicles due to COVID and equipment shortages, so this is a carry forward. We're not expecting delivery of the equipment until 2022.
Maybe when we did the capital budget, we didn't really go through years two through five. You don't have a lot, so maybe if you want to just highlight the.
To 2022, okay.
Because I think most of you are, you understand, but if there's something really, and then I'll open it for questions if counsel, if there's any we didn't touch.
Thank you. Your worship and counsel, as per the summary sheets in the beginning, we've addressed the majority of 2022 aspects, the transfer loader. And when we look further into the budget, 2023, we're looking at additional landfill development peripheral road, that's a $700,000 increase. Stormwater improvements around the transfer station in 2024, $150,000. Landfill packer in 2025 at $515,000. The one project that I want to make sure, you know, the Jones Road landfill, the consultant service for the new landfill, that's at $100,000, so that's quite important to move forward on that. We're looking at a cost for life cycling of equipment in 2026, and that's what we have for large cost items, there, your worship. I'm available for any questions.
Before we go, Kyle has an update on one of our previous questions.
Yeah, it was around that new booth and the question regarding staffing. So I just briefly reached out to Robert, our director of HR, and so I just want to confirm, new booth, same staff. So what this is doing is it's relocating a booth from one point in the process to a different point in the process, so there's no additional staffing as a result of that new booth.
Yep, thank you.
So apologies that that was unclear.
Open the floor to, if there's any questions to counsel on. Counselor Van Wellingham, please.
Thank you, you can hear me?
We can.
Yes.
That's great. But just one thing, Kevin, with the scale, that was 200,000 or 400,000?
200,000, through the chair, it was 200,000.
200,000, is that with a trade, or are we going to use this scale with a different spot in the city?
Through the chair, the scale is past its life cycle. I don't believe that it would be any value of using anywhere else with any type of accuracy.
Okay, thanks.
I'll direct it to Charlotte. The capital budgets base the same way as the big capital budget we looked at. If there's any recoveries from, it'll go back into the reserves of that department.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Counselor McMillan, Counselor Smith, and Counselor Van Wellingham, we're going to take a 10-minute nutrition break, and so we will come back at 2:45, all right? Thank you. All right, so Heather is.